Please floor eyes for the pledge. Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
President Proton Muller?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present. Please let the record show that there are seven present and zero absent. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, and it is full. Just any time a counselor can remove something from it to have it discussed. These items on there, the master plans, were actually discussed a year ago. We had multiple meetings upon them, but for some reason, we never had a final vote. So they are in the consent agenda, but you can poll them if you would like. Or you can make a motion to approve the entire thing.
I make a motion to approve the entire thing.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
No.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and one no. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have one individual who would like to come forward. Commissioner Will Tucker, please come forward and share your name and your address for the record.
So Commissioner Will Tucker, 39233 River Drive in Lebanon, Oregon. So mayor, city councilman, and city manager, I really wanted to come and just tell you thank you and tell you how much we appreciate what's gone on with the drawdown. We've appreciated the way you've approached it. We've appreciated the way you've worked. I appreciate greatly staying in the communication and so that we could be ready with whatever you might need as when things went down the road, but you did a great job. I just thought it was heads up to be early and to be ready. And I think the results of what you've done, the water is still brown, but the results of what you've done, we've seen the flows return, the water is rising. It is a few more weeks of brown water, it'll settle back down. So I just wanted to come and tell you thank you and how much we, as your partner, appreciate the way you led the way. You guys really did. I thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Tucker. We appreciate that. That was really nice. Now, moving on to the next item on the agenda. New business requests for council action, contract approval, emergency housing.
Yeah, good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. What you have before you is an RCA. Some of this should sound a little bit familiar from earlier in the year. We're bringing forward a request to approve a purchase for emergency family housing units. These initially were supposed to go onto the property out on 42nd Avenue near Osage Street, near our flex building out there. However, after being in this position for a few months, and as we were planning on moving that direction, what I discovered was that we had very significant unbudgeted site work costs associated with that, and it left us in a position of not being able to move forward there. So what we wanted to do was pivot because we wanted to use this grant money that CSC, we had applied through CSC for this grant money, and we still wanted to use it. We still wanted to apply it towards the homelessness issue that we've been struggling with here in Sweet Home. And so we ended up moving in the direction of putting that towards FAC. And one of the main reasons that we went that direction is because FAC has been a partner with the city for at least a couple, two, three years now. They already have a established facility off of 24th Avenue. And so, so we went that direction. And so additionally, their site already has utilities and critical infrastructure in place. They have the capacity and experience to manage the project effectively, as they are currently managing it effectively right now. So the grant, the total of the grant is $435,000, so $265,000 of that money would go towards actual housing, while $170,000 of it would go towards operations and site management for that location. So what we did, we ended up going out and receiving multiple bids, and we evaluated those based on the cost and just kind of the whole package and the ability really to meet the grant timeline, which is the end of April. So we ultimately selected the Gettys Brothers as we thought that they offered the best value, and their units actually end up meeting all of the grant requirements to include locking doors, insulation, electricity, heat, and then just being super straightforward to install before the required timeframe. So it ensures that per the grant, we have at least 34 beds for families seeking stability as they transition to permanent housing. And so with the options that you have before you, you can do nothing, which would mean obviously we would lose that grant. And I think it would probably hurt our relationship a little bit with FAC and CSC, because we really do want to make a big impact in our community with this. We could amend the project, but the challenge with that is we have such a tight deadline to see this through. Or staff recommends option three, so that would be to move forward with the purchase of the emergency housing. And so there you have it before you. If council has any questions, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions of counselors?
Madam Mayor, I have quite a few questions. So are we under contract with anybody for anything with the previous plan that we had voted on?
We are not under contract with anyone.
Okay. And then is there capacity at FAC to house 34 beds with these units? And is there a need for 34 beds? Do we have people in the community that?
Yeah, so we reached out, obviously, to FAC. Staff has done site visits at least multiple occasions, and they do have capacity for housing 34 beds down there. And what were the other questions, counsel?
Well, is this for families, children? Is this?
So it is for families, not for children, but it is for families, yes.
Okay. So I was saying, does the community have a need for this type of housing to where this will be full of people from our community?
Yeah, we do. I actually had some members from FAC who were overseeing the project, or overseeing the facility down there here, in case you had specific questions. But I've already connected with Dr. Horton and Candace, the executive director, and we definitely do have a need in our community for that.
And lastly, essentially, this is money that our community will lose if we don't fund this new direction that we need to use this money for?
Correct. We are just the pass-through agency for this grant money. And so that's one of the major reasons why we took it upon ourselves to write this, because there was a need, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I deeply appreciate the conversation that we're having. It's an important one. With that, though, I'd like to move as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table to approve as recommended. Any discussion of counselors?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Is that on? Okay, so my question is, I'm not opposed to this, but so you're going to have three of those folks there. Are they going to be chained off of, or not even fenced off of the ones that are there already? Because I can see some issues that would happen there possibly.
I would have to divert that question to maybe Dr. Horton, but my understanding is, is that it is separate from the, where the housing is, where we already have the housing there. It's on the other side of the property there is where we would put those.
Okay, well, that would be a big concern for me, because you can have, you know, anyway, but, and also I have one question of. So when the money runs out here, okay, because it could, hopefully it won't, but if it, then we're going to be, we're going to have to pay for that. Is that something that's going to happen? I just want to know.
So I can tell you this. I know that Dr. Horton, he is here tonight and can speak to that, but he has been overseeing the finances and actually writing grants for FAC. He is very confident that moving forward, they will have success in obtaining grant money to continue that funding.
Well, if that doesn't come in, should he pay for that? That's all I needed. I'm fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
So staff, just that we have other pass-through grants that we manage for this community. And so pass-through grant just means that we're hosting it, we're housing it, but it goes through another organization, which is FAC. And they are going to manage the grant, if they are going to implement the grant, and we are just the ones that are holding that money. And so this money is coming through CSC from the state, and it's a benefit to our community to have these beds here. So any further discussion of counselors?
Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the table. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to move this forward as recommended. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing and a request for council action, ordinance number six for 2024. So I'm going to have interim city manager, Jason Ogden.
Yes, this is regarding our housing production strategy. So tonight, we're going to be looking at the housing production strategy, or HPS. As you are, most all of you are aware, it's a key step in addressing the critical housing needs identified in Sweet Home. Basically, this strategy provides a roadmap for the next eight years, really focusing on improving housing affordability, availability, and diversity while meeting the requirements of House Bill 2003. The HPS builds on the housing needs analysis we previously completed. It outlines actionable strategies to address the gaps in our current housing landscape, and it also reflects extensive input from stakeholders and consultants with a focus on aligning local values with state goals. And so with that being said, at this time, Madam Mayor, I will hand it over to you to open up the public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:42 PM. And the public hearing regarding the housing production strategy, LA 24-02, is now open. And the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. At this time, I need to ask counselors if they have any personal bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information. Counselor Thorstad?
No.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
No.
Okay. Counselor Thorstad? Counselor Gorley?
Nope.
And I do not either? And we have a consultant who will be presenting information to us? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And I would like to invite our consultant up. Are they online? Okay, okay.
Hello, can we hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right, wonderful. And would we like me to share our slides, or are they on the screen?
You will need to share those, Larissa.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us back here today. We, the last time that Winterbrook was able to speak with you all was at the joint work session with the Planning Commission and City Council. And today, I'm just giving you an overview of the updates to the housing production strategy since then. Review of the timeline, we are at the end of this housing production strategy process. Of course, you are all meeting today to discuss adopting the housing production strategy. Once that is complete, then that will go to the state, to DLCD, where they will review and open it up to larger public comment period before accepting the housing production strategy. There are now 26 actions among the six strategies. Previously, there were 25. As you'll see under B, we added an additional action that I can talk a little bit more about, but it came from our discussions at the work session. The substantive updates to the report are twofold from the conversations that we had with you all. One was emphasizing the importance of public awareness and education regarding the current strategies that you all have implemented and future ones. This was something that came up several times in terms of ensuring that the content around these existing strategies and future ones were meeting your audiences and making them as accessible as possible, and really working off of that strong groundwork that you already have in place. The second was recognizing the need to provide and maintain adequate transportation and public facilities to support the growth that you'll experience over the next 20 years. And again, this came up in your comments and questions as well, and is a very valid concern amongst the growth that you'll all be experiencing. And as you are trying to implement some of these strategies that are encouraging more density or various housing types, that you want to make sure that the infrastructure can support that growth. And so the way that we updated the report to reflect these points was adding emphasis in the descriptions of the strategies when they were informed by your comments, and then expanding on different steps that could be taken to reflect the need for both of these things. The more substantive change was, as I mentioned, adding a third action to Strategy B. Strategy B being increasing participation in your existing housing rehabilitation partnership program. We added B3, which is improving promotional and informational materials. And this came out of your discussions again, specifically really emphasizing the importance of getting that information out there. You have a very strong program, a longstanding program here, and we heard the importance of getting that information out to some of your target audiences. We talked about seniors, and we talked about generally people with your older existing housing stock. So when we wrote this one up, we emphasized the points that we heard around making sure that the information about program eligibility requirements to be a part of the program and to qualify, and then talking about information like deadlines was a really important step to make sure that we are setting up that existing program for even more success. And that limits the sort of substantive changes to the report that were made since the work session. And we know that this went before the Planning Commission earlier this week and did not receive any substantial changes or feedback from there. So this report is ready for you all to discuss today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. I now need to ask if there's anybody present who has testimony in favor of this plan. Anyone has testimony opposed to this plan? And is there any neutral testimony? Okay. Any discussion amongst counselors regarding this plan? Hearing none, I will close this public hearing at 6:49. Now I can entertain a motion to conduct the first reading of this ordinance.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to read this ordinance for the first time.
Counselor Trask?
Yeah. Oh, sure.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes and no nays.
Let me pull that up, one second.
Adam's got it behind you.
Oh, okay.
Some of you are going to miss that. Since we had a unanimous vote to pass that ordinance, I can entertain a motion to hear it, read it by title only tonight.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote to read it for the second time tonight by title only.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to read it for its second time by title only.
I'll just pipe up and do that. Ordinance Bill number six for 2024, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance, amending Chapter Four of the City of Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan and adopting a housing production strategy.
Thank you so much. I can also now entertain a motion to move it to the third reading at the next council meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Please call for a vote.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to move it to a third reading at the next council meeting. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is reports of committees. Do we have any committee reports from counselors?
Other than that FAC is getting a shower trailer installed, that's a pretty big thing. And it's been a big interest to people that have been helping in that situation. Thank you.
Any other reports? Hearing none. Department reports. We have a few in our packet tonight. Are there any directors that would like to draw attention to specifics? Director Daisy?
I just want to point out in my report, I've included the 2024 Oregon Public Library Statistical Report. Those are numbers that I turn into the state library every year. Every public library in Oregon has to do these. These are slightly different statistics than what I present to you every month. And coming up in probably about February, if anyone's interested, there is a spreadsheet of all of the libraries in the state and what they have with these same numbers, and we can compare ourselves pro and con to any other library in Oregon if we so desire. And the stats go back about 20 years. So it's very nerdy, but kind of fun, but that's why you're looking at a lot of statistics this month. And then one other statistic I wanted to point out is that in November, despite being closed for a couple holiday days, we had close to 7,000 people come through our doors, which is the highest that I've seen since I've been here.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other director would like to highlight anything in their reports?
I will. PD will. I would like to highlight, I mean, I keep saying this every month, but I think it's pretty significant because council really wanted a traffic officer position. And for the year, at least through November, our total citations issued are up 23%. Total persons cited up 25%, but our warnings are also up there, too. They're up 15% and total traffic stops are up 13%. So quite a bit more traffic enforcement in town, and I think it's having a big impact. I just want council to know that. A couple of other things at the PD, we just, this Saturday, had our shop with a cop, and it was super successful and a lot of fun. And I just want to say thank you to, we had representatives from the Lynn County Sheriff's Office, the Oregon State Police. We had somebody there from parole and probation, and then on top of that, we had all of our volunteers and other people in our community that came and showed up to wrap gifts for the kids. And I just want to say thank you to all of, everyone who made that happen and made that possible. All of the donations throughout the year from some of you in our community, I'm just really thankful for that. And it was really kind of cool as I ended up having the opportunity to shop with three kids. And when I was with one of them in Buy Mart, I had somebody in the community come up to me and hand me two $20 bills and just say, hey, here's a little extra four for the kids. And so whoever you are out there, thank you. I am, it was very moving, and it was really neat to see. And then I was, all of the kids that I had, it was really interesting because they definitely knew that they were there on a mission to shop for their family. And every single one of them looked at me at some point, and they said, is it okay if I get something for me? And I'm like, yes, of course it is. So it was just really cute. It was a lot of fun. So thank you. I also want to mention that we still have about 20 tags left on our teen sharing tree. So we are extending the deadline to that a little bit longer. The deadline is this Sunday. So if you all know of anyone who might help us out to grab a tag, shop for a teen, and then wrap those gifts and return them to the PD, that would be great. So anyone out there in the community, we have 20 left, and thank you for everyone who's already grabbed a tag. So that's what I got.
Great. Well, you could just move right in, because the next item on the agenda is city manager's report.
Yeah.
Lifting hats?
Yeah, I've got several things since we last met. I mean, obviously, the Green Peter Drawdown update. I'm super thankful to a bunch of people for this particular update. As council knows, we did have a mechanical issue with one of our, one of our three filters at the water treatment plant. And at that point, since we did have that, I believe it's related to the sediment from the drawdown, I drafted a letter, sent that to OHA for review, asking them to halt the drawdown because it has negatively impacted our community and particularly our infrastructure, and sent that off, and OHA- And sent that off and OHA reached out to me, had a conversation and they ran it through their chain of command up through the governor's office. Ultimately, they ended up making a decision to reach out to the Corps and asking them to halt the drawdown. And so I'm thankful that they did that and the Corps did halt the drawdown. Ended up meeting with the Colonel the Monday before Thanksgiving. He ended up coming down along with some other members of the Army Corps. And the purpose of that conversation is the Colonel really wanted to determine whether or not this needed to stop now or if they were able to continue it the rest of the year. And based, based on the conversation that we had with them, they made the determination that no, it's done for the season. And so I'm thankful for that. They did make it very clear that this will be continuing next year, so we need to be prepared for that. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for all the hard work on, on this. I want to thank council for your work on this. I want to thank OHA and Army Corps and the commissioners for their work on this. And so anyway, there's your update on the drawdown. So thank you for your continued support with that as we work to protect our community's water resources. We had our annual tree lighting this last, a couple Saturdays ago on November thirtieth in front of City Hall. It was absolutely gorgeous. Thank you to Public Works for all of the hard work that went on decorating the town and getting those lights on the tree. I want to extend a thank you to the Chamber and Legia for putting on the gingerbread house competition here. That was a lot of fun. Thank you to the singing Christmas tree for some of the carols and the mayor for your welcoming speech to everyone and for the community that showed up. And so we just, you know, events like this kind of remind me of just what it's like to come together as a community. And so thank you to everyone who showed up. I have some really exciting news about some improvements on Mountain View Road. I'm thrilled to announce that Sweet Home has been awarded one point three, well, a little bit over one point three million dollars. Thanks to Blair, our city attorney who wrote for this grant, submitted it to ODOT. And it is a carbon reduction program. Blair was very creative and was able to secure one point three million dollars for sidewalks on Mountain View. So I think if I understand this correctly, we, we want to get these sidewalks in starting near Ames Creek, going up the hill towards the junior high. That's going to be the hardest part to complete and one that has the most challenges. And so we're just guesstimating that we would be able to with the one point three million to complete probably from Ames Creek Road at least to the junior high. And so anyway, Blair, thank you so much for your hard work on that. And we are really looking forward to see, seeing how this project is, is all put together. I'm, I'm really excited about that. So thank you. We have another major win for emergency preparedness. We did, or we were awarded that ED, EDA grant that you are aware of, where the city is going to get eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars from the Economic Development Administration for the purchase of three emergency generators. And so we just got that award this week. So these investments obviously will significantly bolster our capacity to handle power disruptions and ensuring that we can maintain some essential services. So thank you to the EDA for that and for staff for all the hard work that you put into that. I wanted to also recognize and say farewell to some of our outgoing council members. Counselor Gorley and Trask and Mahler want to take a moment just to thank you for your service and dedication to our community. Your contributions over the years have left an impact on Sweet Home. And whether it was through tackling challenging decisions or advocating for community projects, showing up with a commitment to make our city better, your service has been invaluable. And so I just wanted to say on behalf of city staff and myself, thank you for your service. So. And then with that also, as we bid farewell to some familiar faces, we also look forward to welcoming new ones. So at our first council meeting next January, next month, we will swear in Aaron Hagie, Ken Bronson, and Chelsea Augsberger as our newly elected council members. And so that's pretty exciting. Each one of them will bring a unique perspective to the table. And we are excited for them and as staff to work with them together. And so welcome to the team almost next month. As we celebrate this holiday season, I also wanted to take a moment to recognize Hanukkah, the Festival of Lights. And so with this special holiday, it begins on the evening of December twenty-fifth, reminds us of the values of hope, perseverance, and the light that shines even in the darkest times. And so that for those in our community, and I know we have some out there who observe Hanukkah, we wish you a very joyful and meaningful celebration filled with peace, love, and plenty of light. So. And then I have some, the last thing I just wanted to say, I have written down a few closing thoughts. As we come to the end of twenty twenty-four, it's always, at least for me personally, a time just to kind of reflect on my personal life and work life. And, you know, I'm just thankful for some things. And so as we bring the calendar year to a close, I want to thank city council for trusting me in this interim city manager role since August. I really do appreciate that. It's been an incredible journey. It's been fun. It's been challenging. And honestly, it's been filled with some pretty significant accomplishments. And I think together, staff and council as a team, we've tackled some big projects, celebrated some huge wins, and are beginning to lay the groundwork for an exciting future here in Sweet Home. With that, I also wanted to extend my deepest gratitude to all of our staff and community, all of your hard work and support and shared commitment to our city's success has really made this a rewarding experience. And so I'm super proud of what we've achieved together in these handful of months. And so with that, as we head into the holiday season, let's just take some time to reflect, slow down a little bit, celebrate, recharge, and get ready for a new year. So I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to you all and a Happy New Year. And let's carry that momentum into twenty twenty-five. So here's to a safe and joyful holiday season.
Madam Mayor, I had a question. Can we have an update of what's going on with the county behind Public Works? There's a big project going on over there.
Project going on. And I think that would be a reasonable thing. I've got the mayor's report and maybe the council good of the order. Maybe Commissioner Tucker would be willing in, after the mayor's report, just give us an update. Would you be available? Okay. Yeah, we can do that. So our city manager's report, mayor's report are a little bit lengthier this time because of the season that we are in. But I do, before Commissioner Tucker comes up here, I just want to say a thank you to him. He has introduced FAC to Director Bell's office and just making those connections for our community mean a lot. So thank you for using your network to benefit the community. And then we'll hear about what you guys are doing shortly. I, I, I'm just really excited after I, we heard from city manager Pro Tem Ogden about Mountain View sidewalks. I think that's the best news I've heard in a long time. So thank you, Blair, for your work on that. I do want to make a couple of announcements. January seventh, I've requested that our city attorney, Larry Larson, provide Robert's Rules of Order Training and Refresher for current councilors and new councilors. It's going to be at six thirty PM. So I'm hoping you all can be there. We can all use refreshers on that. And Blair is really good at this. So we are grateful for his commitment to help us out. I also just want to remind people that there is a parade of lights this weekend. And the In Creepers Play is happening this weekend as well. Sistina Tolman is a huge asset to our community. She's written that, but she also wrote a play connected with the singing Christmas tree. It was just wonderful this last weekend if you didn't make it scheduled to go next year. I also want to say thank you to city staff regarding the water distribution plant and the work that everybody did there to report, to respond. The Corps did consider restarting and because of the report and the tour that they received and the professional manner in which Jager, Tanner, and Greg handled themselves, the Corps chose to not restart that. And so I'm just very grateful for the Corps for hearing from us and taking our calls when we called them. And I'm excited about that. I'm just starting to hear that it will continue, but at the same time grateful that we had, we were able to stop it this year early. So I also want to say thank you to staff for the wonderful tree lighting. It was a lot of fun to have people come in here and vote for the gingerbread houses if you weren't here. And I think most of you weren't. There was a child that made a gingerbread house. He was so proud of it and he was so excited that all of the people that came to see the tree lighting voted him second overall. And he walked away with two, two awards and very proud. It was very cute. I also want to talk about the Christmas lights. I heard there's been some discussion regarding Christmas lights in town. And there was some information that's been shared that's inaccurate. The lights that we currently have on Main Street were not paid for with taxpayer dollars. About six years ago, councilors took it upon themselves to partner with local nonprofit. And they fundraised to gather money to pay for what is currently there. Each of those five-foot streetlights costs about a thousand dollars apiece. And generous community members donated to cover the cost of these. This was all done without any mayoral support because the mayor should never have the opportunity to pay with taxpayers' money to buy Christmas lights. Nor should any future mayor have that opportunity. So just so you all know, I, I myself think taxpayers' money should be used to fill potholes. And I'm grateful for the councilors that worked together six years ago to buy the lights that are there. And any counselor at any time is welcome to partner with a nonprofit to raise more funds to purchase more lights. That is up to you to do so. And there's plenty of activities happening in Sweet Home coming up. Pay attention to what those are. I also wanted to announce that I've been working with the city attorney and others to begin to open up the Charter Review Committee. Counselor Thorstad will be sitting on that committee and we plan to open up that in the next month. And there's been some people contacted to be appointed to that committee and we will, you'll hear, hear more about that in the near future. But I also want to say a few words regarding the councilors that are leaving. I think it's not an easy job to sit on this dais and to make decisions for our community. Sometimes those decisions can be ones that people disagree with and then others agree with. So you're often caught in the middle. And I just want to say first, Counselor Dave Trask, I thank you for the years of service that you have served here. I know you've cared deeply about Sweet Home. You were, have been an integral part in the Park and Tree Committee. And seeing the committee through significant updates to Sankey and other parts, parks. And you've been significant in also getting the city hall to this new location. You've attended countless city events and have donated your time and resources benefiting our community in many ways. You've played a key role in the Capitol Christmas Tree activities, and you're one of the councilors that raised most of the funds for those lights. You've served on admin and finance and previously on the Traffic Safety Committee. I appreciate the service that you've provided to our community. Counselor Lisa Gorley, you are a bright spot in Sweet Home. You always have creative ideas and you serve our community in so many ways. And as we all know, recently even painting storefront windows to bring Christmas cheer. The flags honoring our veterans would not be there if it was not for your dedication to that project. And your work on the Health Committee has brought cleaner, responsible, safer, and more sustainable responses to issues surrounding homelessness. You're an excellent example of working across the aisle. You know that most of us here are all here for the benefit of Sweet Home. We just all often have a different way of getting there. And you're very good at explaining your opinion, even if it's a differing one, in a professional manner. And then continuing to work well with others. And I just think many of us can learn from your example. So I thank you so much for your years of service on this council. The work that Pro Tem Greg Mahler has done has made a lasting impact on Sweet Home. He was instrumental, pivotal in getting the city hall moved to this location. Even recently, we had a Corps meeting here and the Corps walked in and went, wow, what a great building. It's a great building. It's a building that is more ADA accessible to the people in our community. The last one was challenging to get in and out of as I watched people try and open up the doors or walk up the stairs. And now it's easier access. Thank you, Pro Tem Mahler, for the work that you did to get us here. You stepped in to fill the role of liaison on the library board when the position was left vacant. You have served on the Admin and Finance Committee and previously on the Traffic and Safety Committee. You've served the community in many quiet ways. The recent example is you sent your forklift from Hoi's over to Shum to help them unload them, their semi-truck load of food. And, and you sent a forklift driver. The depth of your historical understanding and knowledge of the city is impressive, and you have a huge heart for Sweet Home and have donated of your time, your resource, your connections, and your knowledge. So I just want to say thank you for your service to our community. I think that they all deserve a round of applause just for sitting in this seat. I want to say that I know that you guys all will still exist in this community and being a city counselor is just one of seventy-three different ways. I'm sure you all will find to serve this community as you are all creative and you care so much about this place. So thank you for your service. Do we have? We do.
This one says eighteen years.
Potentially an honor.
Eighteen years is a long time. But we're just grateful. Okay, so don't want to get too choked up. So let's move on. I'm done with the mayor report. That was quite lengthy. Please let me know if you have any questions. But now let's move on to council for the good of the order. And we're just going to have Commissioner Tucker come up and give a brief description of what's going on behind FAC.
So as promised years ago, when we were dividing up the lands there at the mill site, we promised that we'd bring in a RV dump facility. The driver behind that for the county and for Sweet Home is the fact that we are having difficulty maintaining our standards with the output of waste product management in our parks. And if we didn't do something, we'd have to decrease the number of people that attend the parks that we can't, the, the rules have changed about septic systems and sizes of systems enough that we would have difficulty in, some of them really a great difficulty. On the bright side, having been an RV camper for a long time, when you need to dump, you drive to town, you do grocery shopping, you do other things when you're dumping. And to, and as silly as that sounds, this we hope and expect to see increased business in restaurants and in the shops from hardware to Buy Marts to different places, we expect to see a change when it occurs. So we went to bid. The local Morris Brothers was the successful bidder. I'm sorry, Knife River, I apologize. And they are, they broke ground a few weeks ago. It is a multi-lane dumping facility. We will be paying to dump, we'll be paying to, to get the water. They will be able to refill. There'll be a fifteen-dollar fee to, ten-dollar fee, I apologize, ten-dollar fee. It's fifteen dollars, going to be fifteen dollars in the parks, be ten dollars, again, to try to drive them to the, to the fact that you have the capacity and you have a system that can change that affluence. And, and so it is on, on target, it's on budget. But we're only a few weeks in. So we're just, we're just getting started. And this will be also when we'll pave the road. So the road access to FAC will be paved, sidewalks will be put in. This, the process will be as, again, as we promised and drew up, we will continue to, to deliver that piece. Anything else, Madam Mayor?
That's it. Thank you so much, Commissioner Tucker, for doing that on the spot. Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, if I will. I, I'd like to tell the story of what, what we've had from the council a long time ago. And it's, it's not been good. And. And there's been, I can't, I couldn't count the number of Facebook things that I've seen on that has been told and said about our council. And one of our other councils, she's sitting right back there, she will tell you the same thing. And I, I don't, I don't like saying it. I didn't come here to get this thing and get paid. I didn't get that for that at all. But I liked being here. I liked doing what, what the chief's doing it and what the rest of these people. But we didn't get what we deserved, and especially Kelsey. That was a horrible thing to have happen to our city, and it, it's, it looks bad about us. And, and it's sad. It's really sad. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I've had enough of this, and it's not going to change it, I think of, I hope it does. So a lot of people in this community doesn't even know that stuff happened. But I know one sitting at this table knows, Greg, the former mayor, he was beat the heck out of. Okay, so I'm, I'm done, but I just want to let everybody know that stuff happened that you don't know. And I'm, I'm sorry about that that happens, but I, I've been through it too, and I, I don't like it. But I, I, if you've got any questions about that, just get ahold of me.
Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, I just want to wish Sweet Home a very happy Merry Christmas coming up, and also a Happy New Year. I know there's been past comments that are very negative, but I just want to wish everyone a very Happy New Year, and I'm excited for what's coming up. And thank you, Sweet Home.
Counselor Gorley?
I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to have served you. Each counselor brings their talents, their gifts, their experiences with them. And I think that there's a reason we have seven people here, and I think it's because we don't agree, and we don't just bob our head up and down, that we have those conversations, and we have different opinions, and it's a lovely thing that we can navigate down the road together and come out with something that best suits the diversity of our community and the diverse opinions and experiences that our community members, we should reflect that. And I think that some people forget that if we're all voting unanimously every time, then that vote came too late. It should have happened earlier because we need to have those conversations, and we need to have that diversity. And it's a good thing when we all agree, but it's also a good thing when we don't agree. But we've, we have the table, we have a conversation, and we leave the room, and we should be united out there for you. And I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate something that people don't always think about, that this council, whoever they are, and over the years, we've had many, many councils, they come together and they vote on who our mayor is. And we vote for somebody who is a team builder, someone who is collaborative and can run a meeting effectively. It is not a popularity contest, and it's not something where you go out and you throw each other under the mud to get the most votes. Because Lord knows, there's been many, many times throughout the years that the person who gets the most votes isn't necessarily the best at building that relationship and listening to people and running a meeting. And I really, really appreciate the way it's done for our community, that the people who work with the mayor so close and see the ends and the, the personality of the people that sit up here are the ones who are able to make that vote. And I think it was designed on our charter that way on purpose, so that the person would have to be a team builder. And I'm really grateful for the mayors we've had. I'm actually really grateful for the various counselors we've had for many, many years, and the sacrifices they've made with their time to be able to be here for our community. And I really am excited about the new counselors that are coming on. I'm excited that our community rallied to choose people that are going to lead us forward in a way that is new and exciting. And so with that, I want to say thank you and Merry Christmas.
I want to reiterate that I'm very honored to have served you. And we have one of the best city staffs I've ever could see, and I'd put this city up to anybody. And like I say, I've been very honored and have collaborated with a lot of councils over the years, never, not always agree on things, but that's what part of the council is. And, and our current mayor's done a phenomenal job. I've been proud to work alongside her. But ultimately, again, I'm very proud to work with the city staff. I think we have one of the best. Thank you for your support.
Any other business for the good of the order? Well, I will close this meeting out with a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah and a Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you so much.